Hey, good evening. I called in Nevada City Council meeting to order Gregory meeting Monday, April twenty second, twenty twenty four, six o'clock PM. You get your roll call week.
Melissa, here, seventy-four.
Here.
Dane Nielsen.
Here.
Jason Sampson.
Here.
Keith Guy.
Here.
Danny Eric.
Here.
First item is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve, second.
Jason and Dane, any discussion? Seeing none, have a good vote. That is approved. Take the two content agenda, any item maybe remove for certain consideration. Move to approve, second, Dane, and Steve. Being noticed at the nail, have a good vote. Have a good vote. That is approved. Take this into the public forum. Time to decide for comment in the public on copy of the city business. Other than those, we'll come the agenda and actually be taken. First item, there's a couple proclamation in your packet and the public will be seeing those and Marla's. Put those out for publication, but it's not volunteer week, so. Want to thank all the volunteers all across. You're doing a lot of strong work, something that Nevada does very well. And I learned at the Main Street Award, which you'll hear about in a minute, Iowa is the number two state in the nation for volunteer. We do our part. Also proclamation for Economic Development Week, which is another thing that Nevada does very well. Lots of good job for community creating jobs, we're due proclamation for those things. I'm going to take this to something always exciting and that's wearing a new firefighter. So we'll have Ray come up. Give you some background and we'll mark on you that.
You know, we changed our process. We used to swear in every candidate that made it into probation after their thirty days. We found that a little cumbersome and people moved and didn't make it or you're on, so. Can you vote people onto the department and probationary period? And then once they complete that probation period, we consider them full time on the department or over. Full time members of the department. So tonight, our very first full time member with this new process is Michael Tinta. I'd like to read his history, so you know who he is. Michael Tinta's been married to his wife Amber for fourteen years. They have three children, Brayden, who was fifteen, Kinsey, who was thirteen, and Trey, who was twelve. They lived in Nevada for eleven years. He really enjoys giving back to the community and meeting new people along the way. He knew the fire department would be a great place for him to do that and a great opportunity to learn and to give back at the same time. He really enjoys all the different events for the fire department that they put on for the community and how it helps bring everyone together. Michael is also own company, trucking company. And Kinsey is also a junior member of the fire department, one of three that we have. So with that, we'll have the mayor swear in while presenting with his black face shield. The shield on the helmet is orange when they're in probation period, so that we know that they're in training and we don't see them do something super crazy. And something if there are black shields and they're trying to do that. And then after he swears in, we'll have his wife pick his badge on his room. So if you want to say vote from.
And sign it. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Michael Tinta.
Steve Solmichler.
Steve Solmichler.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the city code of Nevada, Iowa.
And the city code of Nevada, Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
To charge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of firefighter.
The office of firefighter.
For the city of Nevada, Iowa.
For the city of Nevada, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
It was petrified of that. So here's your helmet and here's your black shield. And then there's the badge. Thank you very much.
You want a picture with your kid? Under the city of Nevada.
Oh, sure.
The whole family? Under yourself. All right. I will.
Next in the public forum, we'll call Emily Dakker, Main Street.
Mayor, how's it coming back after the volunteer presentation week? We have some outstanding community volunteers in the room that were nominated by the organizations that they volunteer for. Last year, a group of us did a program through Volunteer Iowa and at the end of it, we got a really small grant. And with that money, we decided to order some little help pins that we would like to annually give out to outstanding volunteers in our community. So if you're here for this, I emailed you to come. Could you stand up and mirror for a photo with them as well? Chris Soske, Bar Mitten, Andrew Cott, Ken, Jocelyn, Kathy Foco, Jaleen Harbuckle. Am I missing anybody? All of these people were nominated by the organizations that they volunteer for and some of them volunteer for more than one thing. Most volunteers from our community, our board, our commissions in town. So our little pin that. Jordan mostly designed with input from our core groups that was involved. It's a tree with handle. We kept saying during our time that we were in the COVID PM committee. Now lots of people wanted to like, oh, to make our place, make our town, make everybody love to be. And then it has the of the green end for the city of Nevada logo. So thank you very much for all you do. I'll ask you out and we'll get a photo of you.
Okay, you're our first, oh, we had the first.
Go.
First volunteer. They are the ones.
Marla's the boss wants to slide over and. Marla, can you go over here? Need to do Marla's. And what would Marla to do?
We have. I mean, the numbers.
You don't need to check.
It's okay. No, I just want you to go over your shoulder now. We get a nice line.
There we go. Look right in, smile.
What, what? Where are you?
Thank you all.
Well, the twenty-five volunteer organizations in town, every single one of them is looking for more help. They're looking for something to do with the community. The other reason I am here tonight is to share that our Main Street, Main Street Nevada last Friday went to Des Moines for the annual Main Street Iowa Development Awards. And for the first time ever, we won an award. So it's super exciting. It's so exciting that I had to come share. So there were seventy-seven nominations. They gave out fourteen awards. We were one of fourteen winners. The award we got was for Business Recruitment, it was called, and we were in the category for population over five thousand. And this, we nominated ourselves for all the work it took and all the collaboration it took together to get Something Blue settled in their new permanent space here in Nevada. So the day that the owner called me, Katie called me and said, what do you have available in Nevada? I need to move my, move my business and I only have X amount of days to do so. And so in that time, we found her a temporary home, thanks to the masons for, for being willing to let her have a temporary lease. Mark Olson let her use his trailer multiple times to move her things here. Brenda Dryer, the mayor, made phone call, real estate phone calls for us while they were nineteen fifty-six. It was just a huge group effort and Main Street Iowa really liked that story and wanted to recognize us for all of our efforts. And I just think it's so cool to, how this story talks about, you know, how well Nevada collaborates. So many of our organizations, our business owners, residents, everybody is willing to step in when needed and we all have a common goal. So we're excited for our first award. The other thing we got recognized for was hitting the two million dollar private investment benchmark. We actually hit one million and two million at the same time or within the same year since last year's award. And this is private dollars spent in our downtown district. So that is not grant money, that is not any city contribution, that is private dollars. So, you know, we've had some really big projects, Copper Spaces, Hamlet, T E Alderman's, the General Building. The Tipton Apartments. So all those big projects made it easy to get to two million, but we did get recognized for that. So again, being part of the Main Street program allows us to be opportunity to apply for some big grants, which helps. But we can't win those grants without city support. So this is an award for all of us that were involved. So thank you for your continued support at Main Street.
Thank you, Emily. And just wanted to go how great it was to receive that award. You know, it kind of means to thank that Katie first came to Pizza Palooza and then it was exactly one year ago that Brenda and I were yelling. You would think I'm bumping paperwork around for to get that building and you're related to have that award. So a nice to Main Street and now there's more to come. I need some way for all of you. Sure.
Whatever you say. I thought people were willing to hold on to that award too.
Go to proclamation, Tamara.
Sure, why don't you stand in and point the proclamation.
Marla, I mean. Anyone else here to speak in the public forum? Okay, then we will close public forum, moving to old business A, Harrington Park Project C, Estrella Conference Project. Considerate to the biz, which includes your number seventy-six, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, or as we award the contract for Harrington Park Project C, Estrella Conference Project. Second, Dane and Dane. We need a second, have a good vote. It's approved. Take this to B, exception appropriate, follow up on Pizza Palooza, request for waiver on the restriction of alcohol on Lincoln Jefferson Highway period, park by the day to D C's. Move to approve, second, Dane, just put them there. None have a good vote. Approved, takes this to item two, approve five day special class D retail alcohol license in Nevada D C. D B A Nevada D C, location twelve oh nine Sixth Street, May ninth, twenty twenty-four, if you may, there are two twenty twenty-four. Move to approve. Dane, Melissa.
Which better me.
Being noticed, got to have a good vote.
Oh, somebody's voice both.
Oh, voice both, kind of.
Melissa Music? Yes, I'm recording.
Yeah.
Dane Nielsen.
Yep.
Jason Sampson.
Aye.
Keith Guy.
Aye.
Danny Eric.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
That's approved. Want to encourage everybody to spread the news, buy your tickets. You have a big crowd that day. Weather's gonna be gorgeous. Dane promises. Okay.
Last time I promised we had.
We can see, Oak Park Estates, relution number seventy-seven, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, resolution setting public improvements, no park provided. I move to approve. Second, Stephen Henry. In that time. Any kind of complete vote. That is approved. Takes us to two, resolution number seventy-eight, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Resolution approving final subdivision plot of Oak Park Estates, first edition, city of Nevada, Story County, Iowa. Accepting the dedication of certain lands for street purposes and very few. Move to approve. And none have a good vote. Approved, takes a C D wastewater treatment facility improvements, phase four project. Approved pay request number seventeen and the amount of two hundred twenty-three thousand, five hundred thirty-two dollars.
Okay.
Or. Being noticed, got to have a good vote. Approved, takes two, resolution number seventy-nine, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Resolution accepting wastewater treatment facility improvement, phase four, as initially completed. Move to approve. Second. Dave and Henry. Being noticed, got to have a good. That is approved. Take this to three, approve pay request number eighteen, the amount of three hundred seventy-four thousand, nine hundred eighteen dollars and forty-seven thousand.
Move to approve.
Second. Steve. Being noticed, got to have a good vote. I refer, takes this to E, Nevada Field House, number one, approve pay request number twenty, from H P C LLC, amount of twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred twenty-one dollars and seventy-two. Move to approve. Or, Dane, Jason. Being noticed, got to have a good vote. That is approved. Takes this to approve progress billing invoice number two, from H two I Group for gym equipment, the amount of twenty-five thousand, seven hundred forty-two dollars.
What can you approve?
Second, Melissa and Dane. Being noticed, got to have a good vote. As approved, takes this to C, approved progress billing invoice number three, from H two I Group for gym equipment, the amount of six thousand, two hundred dollars. Move to approve.
Second.
Steve, Sam. Sam is gonna ask, did they get your damage stuff fixed that they mentioned?
Um, H two I or?
Yeah.
Pike or?
I thought it said something came in damaged.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah. Well, it doesn't part of this, right?
Yeah, it's on board, gonna be here.
Do they take care of it for you? All right. I don't want to pay them before they.
No.
Fix it up.
We're still holding them.
Okay. Burn.
Yeah.
You're happy, I'm happy. Any other discussion? Any none have a good vote? And it's approved. Takes this to four, the number one, the amount of four thousand, two hundred forty-one dollars. Move to approve.
Second.
Steve, please send me. Being noticed, got to have a good vote. As approved, takes this to F, ordinance number ten fifty-three, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four. Northern submitting the zoning map of the city of Nevada, Iowa by rezoning the property at two thousand six, from A R Agrar Patrol Regional Dwelling District. To R two, single family and youth failing dwelling district, third entirely. Move to approve, second, Dane and Danny. Being noticed, got to have a good vote. As approved, takes this to new business, new business A, Hamlet Theater Foundation. Approved five day class D retail alcohol license to Hamlet Theater Foundation, D B A Hamlet Theater Foundation. Location one, 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 four, six, three, effective May third, May twenty-four, the May seventh, twenty twenty-four. Move to approve.
Okay.
Being noticed, got to have a good vote. As approved, takes this to two, approve reimbursement, number one, request. The Hamlet Theaters Downtown Housing Program Grant to I V E A Award Number Twenty-two, A R P D eight, zero four zero.
Move to approve.
Second. Sandy and Dane. Being noticed, got to have a good vote. That is approved. Take, you have to approve. Resolution number eighty, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, or we can prove an agreement for covenants and just a downtown housing grant program. In the city of Nevada, Iowa and Hamlet Theater Foundation. Move to approve. Second. Being noticed, got to have a good vote. That is approved. Takes this to B, resolution number eighty-one, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Resolution all rising salary increase for non-union employees for fifteen years, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, effective July first, twenty twenty-four. Move to approve.
Second.
Jason and Martha. No further discussion, have a good vote. As approved, takes this to C, resolution number eighty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Resolution provide for notice appearing on plans for patients, forms of contract. That's what it costs for the nineteen three trail project and the dignity of there, therefore. Move to approve, second, Dane and Steve. Being noticed, got to have a good vote. Approved, takes this to E, ordinance number ten fifty-four, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Northern submitting the code of ordinances of the city of Nevada, Iowa, two thousand six. By many provisions pertaining to sanitary sewer system, chapter ninety-five. Building sewers and connections, chapter ninety-six. Use for public sewers, chapter ninety-seven, and onsite wastewater system, chapter ninety-eight, per freezing. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Steve and Sam. Question on that. Being none, have a good vote. That's approved. Takes this to K, ordinance number ten fifty-five, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Northern submitting the code of ordinances of the city of Nevada, Iowa, two thousand six, by many provisions pertaining to sewer use chart, chapter ninety-nine, per freezing.
Move to approve.
Second. Dane and Dane. Under that plate holder, see that, put in there before, get it on. Okay. Being noticed, got to have a good vote. That is approved. Take this to report, starting with city administration.
All right, last couple of weeks, we had a meeting over, that was nine ninety percent. Thank you for approving that. Also had an N E D C workforce meeting. Had a panel discussion for R S R A, which is the rural housing. Part of this, the beginning of the summit that takes place a day before the summit starts and that one came to look to a lot of housing talks and the need, need of that. Which, you know, they had a really positive spin on, on that whole conversation that. It's a good problem to have when you need housing because then these people are moving to your community. So it, you know, it was nice to hear that positive spin on it and then followed up with that, the rural summit. And it was really good as well this year. Also had a meeting with the design committee. And then this last week, we were in Washington, D C and we met with Beanstraw, Ernst, Bacon, Grassley. Farrah Abram and a few others. And we talked about rural water, railroad, some other things, mental health pertaining to soul community. That's been a big deal lately. And then research and development, that's great. So a lot of very positive conversations and I felt the conversations with. Are pertaining to rural water were a lot more positive this year. But still have a lot of work to go and hopefully we can move forward with all that. But.
All of our off hours. Hey, so moving on from my report, on the Iowa Women's Basketball Day, I don't know if you saw that, but we got one to claim that. We don't ask that. Oh, we do. I do. I do my quarrel. But want to thank Sandy for pulled down the fourth last time. It's difficult to meet a meeting on Zoom, so appreciate her conducting the business there. I, we've already talked about Main Street Award, but it was also neat. They've been hosting a bunch of other Main Street communities coming here. Our potential Main Street communities coming here to learn about what we've done so that they can apply for thinking with the last one of those and women's here before. So it's neat to answer those questions. Jordan already hit on the DC trip, but what's neat about that is now there are three counties involved, so it's Moon, St. Hamilton County for the region. So just seeing the regional partners that continue to grow and develop is pretty neat. They're celebrating each other's success. Moon just got the big daisy plant, which is really a big deal because we'll see all through this highway thirty corridor ramifications from that. So it'll definitely help the whole region. And then the rural summit again, it was really good. I got a chance to present about rural pharmacy access and be on a panel there. And I know Sandy's a big part of putting that on, so thank you for your hard work. I think it's really neat. And it's also neat to see some projects year after year that they, that they start talking about a concept that has to come back and be implemented. So there's a really, basically Uber, her first responder, first aid type program that the senate governor brought back from one of districts to Israel. And there are several counties doing it and it's pretty neat because it helps people have that, that medical training when there's something going on. And helps them respond in case the ambulances or whatever else are farther away. And I know here in the community, our cross train public safety department is a little bit less of a concern, but we have places in the county where the. Newer first responders may be a little ways away, so need to hear about that and how different counties are using it. With that, I'll answer any questions you may have for me. And council reports.
I'll just add a couple of things, because I hear all of those things as well, but. The rural readiness, rural housing readiness, especially the city, in that, a few years ago. The rural readiness, rural housing readiness, especially in the city, in that city a few years ago, and what. And that workshop came out of communities that have participated in that. Like, what did you do? Because we have been great stories and tell a higher level. Now, we're just getting around straight on about, you know, last twenty years, what can you do to win those buildings, also on the economy. It's important, I think. Also, I would echo the mayor's point on the regional development, using my ears and having worked in the community, I know development is important as mayor. To hear, not only hear, but learn and have the chance to meet leaders in our own region. That are looking at how we work, working together, I think, very essential, I would. If I failed in my duties last, at the last meeting, didn't welcome Melissa, I heard her first. I thought that I signed a control party, she did have that, so welcome to the council. Like, clear.
Like a pro over there, right? I'd just like to recognize the Nevada School, the high school for their data service, um, they helped out a lot downtown last Friday, uh. It's a planner box is out, I, um, wash windows, carrying stuff, uh, crap. Big help, but a little bit of time makes a big difference when you've got that many kids working on top, so it's pretty cool to see. And there'll be soon beautiful flowers downtown, hang in there.
They'll get blown away.
I did get stopped earlier, just someone told me how nice they looked, so very nice.
Okay, okay, we're, we got a few weeks.
Just wait till they're flowers and I'm.
Yeah. Pretty.
I just wanna thank the community adversary for part of the leadership of data survey that we have. On the trail system. Prostate. Okay. Lot of good information, I just sent that information to the park board to look at too. Kind of sort of retooling kind of what they are, my specific area, where you all were required, like. Talking about the beautification, possibly they, you know, they have a lot, so. But all three groups are doing it, we're writing. Move up to that, true.
Any reports, we'll head back for staff.
Bar Blue Control, our regular operation monitoring maintenance, the way board treat by the station, they're multiple major, they're going. Uh, intermediate pump number two, the intermediate pump station, uh, burned up, we've added hole and sent in for repair estimates. Giving a couple tours to a few people with a new wastewater facility. And, uh, we had a repair, one of the primers, generators, clarified. And replacement of some cool filter lines on one of the backup generators of the multiple. Any, um, any questions? Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council, we've got a number of things to update the, uh, the city on this evening. Uh, first and foremost, just a reminder that we're here, we're coming Thursday, seven thirty to nine at gathering, which has. Your schedule and cabinet chair attendants would love to have you. President Jensen from MAC is our chief speaker and, uh. He's a very reliable, um, speaker to have and have a chance to hear him. Actually quite funny and he's been very capable. This is what I'm saying, I'm thirty AM, I know we're not meeting people, you know, he's making room for more, we'd love to have you join us. Uh, I did a couple of informational workshops on the owner ID programs, you can send me those right now. I can tell you, if you wanna have a meeting and have folks turn out anything, somebody who knows that is Saturday mornings. Are much better than the weekday nights, so have good attendance on Saturday, we're just maybe we're gonna have a. Good batch of applications coming, and those are due on the end of May, so we have folks who are asking me, we have questions, we're gonna take them. Uh, to, to direct them to me. Uh, we got the results of the housing study, or no, not housing, hotel study, uh, late last week, and so in general. Uh, it shows that we have a meeting in the market for, uh, seventy-five hotel units and. Really focused on new standard state and meet all of the different, uh, needs of different communities, so. Uh, a lot of our employers and lunch or folks that are in the town, so. Uh, I have shared the results out with a number of hotel developers and. Keep your fingers crossed, we can get some traction and get that goal in fact, in the hotel community in twenty twenty-four. If you want a little excitement, the homes for Iowa will roll into Nevada from meeting on Wednesday morning at eleven. And, uh, we've been getting that ready over on D, uh, on some lots of the NEDC now home, so. Um, we're not sure what to expect, but they've, uh, told me that, um. Uh, that they should, should get arrival by eleven o'clock, keep my fingers crossed, they notified everybody that they need to know about. So, uh, we had some interest on that home already, so it'd be nice to, to, um. Get that occupied shortly after it's completed. I have some real estate numbers that you might find in anything as well. Uh, these are equal numbers, about, uh, or actually the end of market numbers. Uh, in twenty twenty-four, we had active with a figure of nineteen in the community compared to a year ago, five, so. More houses on the market a year ago. Uh, to date, we sold twenty-seven homes, thirty-one more last year. We have more homes on the market, sell more. Um, the average price is two hundred and three thousand seven hundred and one, you do. Down again, over last, again, that's rising, um, not sure, you know, still, boom, or just say, uh. Two hundred and three seven ninety-two, and the average age on the market is, um, thirty-eight days. And I'll share that in contrast to Eans in Story County. So in Story County, the average days on the market, uh, this, these numbers exclude the Eans fifty, and in Eans it's forty-nine, so. Just some interesting specifics, I'll try to remember. Share those with you every now and then, I wanna know how this is formal from plenty of our minds and. It, it would be fun to see that average, so I'm trying to go off with this, in the mark, too. Any questions from me from the council, mayor? Said enough to me, the mayor, he's already hanging out with me, but, um, it was a treat to have her in Nevada delegation. Uh, with us in DC and certainly a lot of the things that are going on here, creating a lot of. How are you doing? I can, perhaps maybe you can start talking about how many subdivisions we have in the pipeline and certainly we aren't yet all. Always available if you have questions. Well, the Hoover one thing is legislature is over, so it's. There aren't any major things that I developed any activity for my side, storm waters, so. Um, working on annual park of reporting and we'll send you that, I went away last week and. Heard a lot about employee engagement and those kind of things. The camera recording and first off.
Just going to add a little bit on top of the SRF project, approved by my president in part, uh, there were two other phases or projects. To that SRF project, the West Tributary Indian Creek and Indian Creek, so, um. Last week we did receive the NRC permit, so that's a big win, and, uh, we hope to see that, you know, our plan of planning coming here in the next couple of weeks. So, Harrington Park, I think we probably see that work commence probably in June, so I cracked the door, we had a meeting this morning, so that's moving along. Um, the last thing I wanted to hear with you is, um, the cemetery mapping project that we've been working on, where you can search burial site. That will go live, um, on May first, it's been about two years we've been working on that, longer than we thought, but, um. Excited to roll that out, I hope people will like it, um, it's pretty self-explanatory when you get to it, but, uh. If you know people that have questions or anything like that, with our quick piece of news. You have an answering question? Thank you.
Uh, just a couple of things, fire release, you know, fell in tonight for Director Brandes. Um, Monday I have a meeting with, uh, Department of Health and Human Service Director, Tita Roche Littler, um. I'm meeting with, uh, the International Association of Fire Chiefs, next incoming president, Dr. Waldo, and both of them on channel. Dr. Lucy Wittenmeyer is the past president of the Grand Central Association, and there are six other national leaders that are meeting. Were in the process of getting CMS, or the Senator for Medicare and Medicaid. The services to adopt a new X-Pix code or a Medicare code to reimburse thermal fuse, and so. It's pretty exciting because all the feedback that we've gotten is very positive, uh, so far we have three states that are. reimbursing thermal fuse installation, uh, Washington, Missouri, and Iowa, so. Uh, we anticipate other states, there's a lot of momentum going on, a lot of considered things, uh, we've introduced a fire code that deals with. Use for home residences and that past hearing last week, so, uh, we think there's some significant traction on that, I can tell you. Uh, this week we had three fatalities in our country, wrapping every one of them with, and so, uh, this isn't just Nevada problem, this is national. We're seeing every four days a significant fire related to Almar, and so as our population ages, as the COPD, uh. And the emphysema, uh, diagnosis seems to increase with time, uh, we're seeing that this problem is not gonna get smaller, it's gonna get bigger, so. Uh, I think it's been a great success, George. Uh, last week I was in Emmitsburg at the National Fire Department, assistance for fire, I was on through FEMA. Uh, I can tell you, there's an awful lot of very poor fire departments in this country, uh, some that do a hundred percent fundraising to survive. Uh, and then, uh, I just made me feel very thankful that our city supports our fire department the way we do our community. Uh, supports the fire department, and, uh, we did put in for an assistance firefighter grant for eighteen states in here. So hopefully those grant reader like me that are reading grants will see ours favorably. Um, and then while I was in Emmitsburg, I had an opportunity to speak with a leader of grants office. About a concept of, nothing's been more frustrating for me as a fire than the installation cost of sprinkler, uh, the hookup from the city. Into a building is probably the most expensive part. And so I've introduced an idea, if a district was a natural historic district or on registry, then FEMA develop a sprinkler. Uh, installation grant, forty, sixty, hundred thousand dollars to address these historic buildings, um. I think there's significant contribution from FEMA would protect firefighters and would help us to develop these downtowns throughout the country that. Are looking for that incentive to be able to do that, so, uh, while I'm in DC, I managed to have a meeting now with FEMA. And the National Historic, uh, Association in DC to talk about the concept of doing nationwide sprinkler grants for historic buildings, so. Uh, I think it's a great opportunity, certainly in my opinion, is a lot better than giving a couple hundred thousand dollars to a fire department, it's a small. One-time thing where we could affect more of these historic buildings. Uh, the last quote I'll tell you about sprinkler is where we say that history is not preserved unless it's protected. So that's a concept to think about, and then on behalf of, uh, Director Brandes on the police department side, um, Skyler Coder. Skyler, uh, graduated from the academy on Friday. And he will start his, uh, FPO training on Monday, I'm sorry, tomorrow, Tuesday, so I forgot what day it was, so. Uh, we're excited to have him on board, he can be a great addition to us and fills a gap, so, any questions? Thank you very much for your time.
I won't talk that long, so, yeah. Two projects underway right now, one is around the elementary school, which, uh, that'll be redoing all of the infrastructure and roadway. And then I got a phone call this morning, uh, the G and Cup Avenue projects, the G Avenue project will get started on, uh, Wednesday. Be cutting curb line out, so went and delivered all the notes to citizens along that road, just to give my heads up and. Apologize for the short, uh, notes. Any questions?
I'm coming, yeah.
Thank you, councilman, over your turn. Move to adjourn. Sorry, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.